Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ken Sneth. I'm the current mayor of the city of Vader. It's my privilege to welcome all present and are grateful for your presence and participation. Particularly, I would acknowledge our city council members, one of whom is here for the first time. You're welcome to this. I would call this meeting to order officially at 6:01 PM on the 13th of April 2017. With that, we'll proceed with our roll call and would invite our city clerk to perform that function.
Andy Wilson?
Present.
Jason Daley?
Any word regarding his absence? Well, then, in his current absence, the council needs to determine through a motion as to whether or not it's excused or unexcused.
Make a motion that Mr. Daley's absence is unexcused.
You've heard the motion from Mr. Shai to declare Mr. Daley's absence as unexcused. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, motion is carried. We may proceed.
Okay. Joe Shai?
Present.
Mike Parsons?
Present.
Leona Hunter-Sander?
Present.
Did I do that in the right order?
No, but does.
Leona, Hunter, Hunter. How can I get it? Mayor Smith?
Also present.
Okay.
So with that, we do have a functioning quorum. We may now proceed with our pledge of allegiance and would invite all of these rise. And Mr. Parsons, please believe us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I hope we're still here for the next meeting.
Amen to that. I hope we are.
News don't make me feel good.
Dearly noted. Well, with that, we will proceed with the mayor's report and I would be most pleased to acknowledge the presence of a representative here, or two, maybe?
Mine.
Okay. Then, we would invite you to take the podium and explain the significance of the sexual assault awareness month.
Wrong person.
Oh, that's rude. I'm sorry. Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Ruth Allison. I've been a member of the board of directors of Human Response Network for almost six years now. I'm currently holding the office of treasurer. And the purpose of coming here tonight is to bring awareness to this issue of sexual assault in our community and to let you know about the services that we have available. We are here to encourage community to start talking about this and to educate our community Human Response Network is the accredited agency in the county for treating and helping victims of sexual assault and violence. We have advocates that are on call 24 hours a day. If sheriff's office or any of the police departments call them out, they come out either to the hospital or the scene if that's what's needed. They will stay with that person through any kind of exam that might happen. They will accompany that person through court times if they might appear. We do not, however, encourage our victims to pursue prosecution. We would encourage them if that's what they chose to do, but we aren't, that's not our goal. Our goal is to do what the victim needs. We have lots of court groups. We have trained psychologists that we refer them to. We will pay for those visits through our grant monies and we, as I said, are always there and on call. They can call anytime of day that they need to. I'm doing a lot of, I shouldn't do that. One of the things that I wanted to make you aware of is that we have a sexual assault nurse examiner program that we didn't have a year ago in which the nurse that does these exams for rape kits and such actually comes down Lewis County now. That's huge for this county because before that, they had to go to Providence-St. Peters. You know, Vader's a little bit off the main track. Chales, Centralia, that's even far. But imagine those victims out in Mineral or Packwood. A lot of these folks don't even have transportation. In the past, we provided that. We still do. If it's to Centralia or if it's to Olympia, we will provide that transportation if needed. Again, a lot of this is just covered by grant monies. Last year, and remember, this is very underreported, we served 52 adults. We've only served 11 so far this year, thank goodness. Last year, we served 44 children, but this is barely mid-April and we've already served more than half that number this year. We served 23 children as of a week or so ago. This does not include the care that we give to the caregivers, the parents, grandparents, and other people who take care of these victims. So we also have programs for that. As a matter of fact, today at Bethel Church, we had a program that we co-sponsored with Youth Advocacy Center called Darkness to Light. And the purpose of that was to educate parents, caregivers. It actually gave the bar people, the attorneys, continued education credits if they attended that. So it's to educate many members in the community to watch for the symptoms, signs, and know what they can do to take care of those victims of sexual assault. I would like to ask if anybody has any questions for me? Okay. I know I covered a lot of it already.
That's good.
Mr. Mayor, did you want to read the proclamation?
Well, I have no problems reading it. I would defer to your judgment.
I would, I have, this is my third council meeting this week and I would love to have you do it because I've been doing it.
Sure.
It also, I think, has maybe a better impact.
Absolutely.
And this is always a pleasure. This is like my third time coming down here to visit you folks and I enjoy that. I was at NAPBY and city council meeting and we were like next to last P M. and it was a three-hour meeting.
We were sensitive to that.
So if you would love to, I'd love to hear that.
Well, sure. I'd be more than honored.
Did you mean?
Yes, I'll need to.
Oh, you have a different package.
Oh, for heaven's sake.
Is that the one that says Morton or does it say Vader?
I've read that one.
It's got Vader.
Okay.
The one with the centees doesn't.
Whereas, sexual assault awareness month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every community member of the city of Vader. And whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impact our community and statistics show one in five women and one in 71 men will be raped at some point in their lives. And whereas child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience a sexual assault before the age 18.
Would you like to take over?
Yes, thank you.
And whereas young people experience heightened rates of sexual violence and youths ages 12 to 17 were two and a half times as likely to be victims of rape or sexual assault. Whereas on campus, one in five women and one in 16 men are sexually assaulted during their time in college. Whereas, we must work together to educate our community about sexual violence prevention, supporting survivors, and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions. And whereas, when we actively get involved, we can prevent sexual violence. The first step is increasing education, awareness, and community involvement. It's time for all of us to take action to create a safer environment for all in the city of Vader. Whereas, the Human Response Network is the recognized accredited service provider for sexual assault advocacy services for the citizens of Lewis County. Now therefore...
I can go ahead and.
Okay.
Now therefore, I, Kenneth D. Smith, mayor of the city of Vader, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2017 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. In the city of Vader, Washington, we ask that community members recognize the serious impact of sexual assault and that to support and embrace the significant role each of us can play in the prevention of sexual assault. Sign sealed and dated this 13th day of April 2017. And I have actually officially signed a document which we would be, are pleased and gratified to support.
And thank you again and I appreciate the time and I do hope that the community members that are present give this some thought and if you have somebody that you know that needs our services, please refer them to us. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ruth. Appreciate it.
Do we need a motion outside you?
No, it isn't necessary. So with that, let's proceed with the mayor's report. I would, item number one, call to your attention the upcoming community, the big meeting, which is now officially scheduled for May 20th at 10:00 AM in the cultural hall of the Assembly of God Church. And notice is being distributed throughout the community and we're hoping that it's not being sponsored by the city or elected officials. This is a movement from within the residents. And so we hope that a goodly crowd shows up and that it will be an historic moment for the city of Vader to come together with some unity and singleness of purpose. Then I wanted to bring to the collective attention of some potential grant funding involving potholes. And we're very good at producing potholes. We fight pot, but we create potholes. And I would say something about potheads, but I won't. This is official part of our record. But the point is that we're on the lookout for potholes that might meet the criteria for the grant funding, which is unfortunately that pothole be located in an area where the pavement is not already compromised or alligatored, as they say. So if any of you are present this evening or in your comings and goings around the community see a pothole that might fit that criteria, we'd like to document it to see if we could build a case sufficient to get such funding. Does that make sense? And I think I identified one good. So I hope that other vigilant residents of our community find others. Then I wanted to continue to inform the council of progress that is being made with regard to code enforcement. We are seeing property owners continue to demonstrate responsiveness to the letters that they're receiving from the city. And I hope that you've discerned, as you've driven around, that there is progress being made. So without getting into specifics, though, given sensitivities of the property owners, I'd be more than happy to share what I'm observing after the meeting. I felt you should also be aware, if you haven't discerned, that there was an application made from a property owner on the Brandon Milton property who's made an official request to renew their producer and processor license for marijuana production, which of course we're not supportive of. But we will, we're required to submit a response to that application to the official Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board at least 30 days before the application will be processed. And that date is September 30th. So we have between now and August 30th to submit our response, which we're already in the process of preparing. And obviously, the city has ordinance which does not support that renewal. So if you need additional information, feel free to contact me after the council meeting or get the documents that we have related to it from our city clerk. Okay? And I believe that that represents the totality of the mayor's report. I'll proceed now with the council reports. Does anybody on the council have something that they would like to share?
You think he could get the public works man to go up and down the alleys and kind of straighten some of the potholes out? Some of them are getting real, real bad. I mean, I thought he could use a grader and maybe straighten some of those potholes.
He actually has been doing that. There was an order that was given to him 10 days ago, if I'm not mistaken, right? And I've observed him on the tractor with the grader going over alleys. Do you have one in particular that is of concern to you?
Not really. I travel all the alleys every day and I don't know how many alleys we got.
We have a lot. That's why we gave an order, because I was doing the same and some of our alleys were unacceptable, but.
My alley's pretty good, but then you go over here on the one by the old fire hall, it's real, getting real bad.
Yeah, he did that one. I watched him do it a week or so ago. But thank you for that. Jill, did you get a report from him on how he's coming with that project?
He is continuing to work on them if they're, I think he's hesitant to put too much gravel down right now because it's so wet, it just disappears.
Right.
And it's so muddy, but he's trying to keep them passable until the weather gets better and we can do something a little, a little more.
He does a good job. I don't.
Well, he does, yeah. And we give him an assignment. He's prompt and he's good at it. You hopefully have noticed that we've acquired enough coal patch to go and continue to fill the potholes in our declining streets. So by the post office in particular. But we hope that Mother Nature will give us a break here in the next month or so, knock on wood. Yes, any other council reports?
Yes, I was, talked to the other day about the power out at McMurfey Park.
I was involved in that drama and thank you for.
Yeah, so I hear that we do have power out there and we're getting it set up. We're trying to get it set up so that they should be able to use it.
Right. Yeah, it's unfortunate that our public works employee wasn't specifically aware of its presence and availability at the time that we first looked into it, but yeah, it's there and it's ready for plug-in. We just have to have it turned on. And what is the status with that, with P U D?
I'm in the process. Haven't called them yet, but it just takes a phone call and they'll come out and turn it on. So I mean, it's all, everything's set up. It's just off because we haven't had a use for it and might as well not pay $50 a month to have it available when we don't need it, so.
Yeah.
But we will have it turned on and it will be available for the country cruisers.
Perfect.
Is that, is that something that we should talk about, having it turned off when the gate gets shut?
In the winter.
In the winter?
That's just, that's what we've just begun to do.
Okay.
But the park board is so, the public's aware, is scheduled to open McMurfey Park on April 29th, I think is the date. So the park board's overseeing that, of course.
Great. I'd like to see when they make a comment. It's a good thing we keep the park closed because several years ago, I was, when we had it open, I'm going down there like I do all the time. Here they are squirreling down there in the bottom, very bottom of the park down.
Well, there's squirrels down there year-round. Oh, you mean squirreling?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Yeah, they'll get stuck down there.
That's not good. Next official park board meeting is at 6:30 on April 24th. Anyone would care to participate in that meeting? With that, any other reports from members of the council? During that, let's proceed with our agenda approval.
I make a motion to approve the consubarian agenda for April 13th, 2017.
Okay, Mr. Welson has submitted a motion, as you've heard, to approve the current city council meeting as written. We have a second for that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Leona Sander Hunter. Okay, that's your first official second.
I know. It's like.
That's history. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? A motion is carried. Now the minutes approval for the city council meeting of March 23rd.
I'll make a motion to approve the city council meetings for March 23rd, 2017.
Okay. Mr. Parsons has submitted that motion as noted. Do we have a second?
Yeah, second.
Seconded again by Mr. Welson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion is passed. Now the voucher approval for.
I make a motion to approve the vouchers for the first of April 2017 at the amount of $25,027.
Okay, Mr. Welson has submitted a motion as noted to approve the vouchers in the amount specified. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion is carried. Now our special reports. This evening, I know that Mr. Cheeseman, or, sorry, that Cheeseman is here to provide us our official law enforcement report for the month of March.
Did you give them a copy of this?
Yes, I did.
So they got it.
I did.
So March, we had 391 contacts, 10 calls were on shift, nine calls off shift, so 19 total calls for the month. Out of those, there's two crimes of theft and a, and a prow. I should also bring up, just remember, this is tax month and that fraud of tax is coming back around again. So if you get a call from the IRS, that is not legitimate. You never pay someone for the IRS that calls you because the IRS does not do business that way. But we've started to see a huge amount of those calls coming through because it's tax month, so. Other than that, didn't have too much of anything else.
Okay.
It's a nice month so far.
Knock on wood. All right.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
Somebody brought up, what does OFS mean?
That's off-shift.
Off-shift?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay.
So there should be nine, nine of those off-shift and then 10 were on.
Okay. Thanks.
Excellent. Okay, thank you so much. We appreciate your service. I ought to note that we had scheduled a report from Civil West, our engineering company. We have a representative.
No.
But I know, but I would want to call to the council.
She's not from Civil West.
Oh, somehow I am double mistaking you.
Right? Me? Yeah, you're Betsy. Yeah, she's Betsy Dillon from the county. The county water system.
Well, I wanted to inject that our Civil West representatives are quite mistaken. Oh, my goodness. Are going to be at our next city council meeting.
Actually, the first of May, the first meeting in May, which is May 11th.
All right, perfect. So May 11th, so the council is aware of that. So the report that we anticipated we hear tonight is now two meetings away.
Yes.
Okay, well, with that, we're pleased to welcome a representative from the county to give your report for public comment.
Yeah, so I'm Betsy Dillon. I'm with the, I'm with the water system and I'm here so just to give the public an opportunity to comment and so you're aware of some funding that we are pursuing for the tank project. So the tank project, we have a large community development grant right now from Commerce and it's about $750,000. And our preliminary estimate that we've gotten back for the cost of the tank is about a million dollars. So we have a little bit of a funding gap. So we are putting out another application for the USDA rural development and it's a, it's a loan grant program and they, they give grants based on need. And so we don't know yet how much of that is going to be grant. We're hopeful it'll be most of it. And so you guys are welcome to comment on that, you know, tonight, or you're welcome to call me or email me if you have anything you would like to address. My business card's on the front table.
I would have had a question relating to that. I know that each month or each year, you set aside funds for capital improvement.
Yeah.
Would there be any funds that have been accumulated that could be applied towards that shortfall?
Well, if maybe we could, we could redirect some funds for other projects. Hopefully, we won't have to do that at all. So we could always, you know, move money around and kind of push, push projects back if we need to. But it's not, it's not the amount that we would need to cover it totally.
Do you know how much is in that fund? Off the top of your head.
Right now, we're, I don't know, sorry.
Okay.
But the C I T fund, the search yard that we just got approved is going to be about, we're going to get about $11,000 a year in revenue from that, so we'll build from there.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, did, Betsy, did you anticipate that there would be some time allocated for a public comment?
Yeah, I was expecting if anyone wanted to comment during your normal comment time.
Well, now it might be as appropriate a time to engage in that if the council would so indicate or so move.
Sounds good. As in a motion?
Yeah.
I need a motion. I'll make a motion that we allocate a certain timeframe. Is that correct?
No.
No?
Yes, or until such time as there's no further comment.
So I'll make a motion that we allocate five minutes or until there's no comment to talk about this Vader Enchanted Valley Water System fee schedule changes.
Okay, I heard the motion submitted by Mr. Parsons to declare a period is not to exceed five minutes or until such time as no further comments are brought to the council's attention during this regularly scheduled city council meeting. Do we have a second for that motion?
Seconded.
Okay, seconded by Mrs. Sander Hunter. Any additional comment?
I, I'm sorry.
Yes.
The fellow comment is for the grant, not for the fee changes.
Oh, okay.
Okay, we.
Does the, the grant, is it going to affect your fees or your rate?
Well, okay, yeah, that's substantially different than we anticipated.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, then we might need to modify that motion to reflect that it only involves the potential grant funding related to the second storage facility, not the rate changes.
Is there anybody that's going to want to talk about this?
What is it that we want to talk about?
So.
If you have any questions on the grant.
Yeah. What would we know about it, though?
So the.
Not to, not to.
It was actually part of an initial presentation and part of a previous.
Well, so, yeah, the USDA has a really big law application process and part of it is we have to make the public aware of that we're pursuing funding and. we have to make the public aware of that we're pursuing funding and if you have objections or any questions to that, you can, you can bring that up.
Is this something that you would come to the public for financial information in order to qualify for it?
But what, what do you mean?
No, I don't think so.
Yeah.
No, no, okay. Yeah.
It's a good question.
Oh, like, no, yeah, like the income survey?
Yeah, yeah.
No, yeah, we don't have to do that.
I'll just withdraw my motion.
Okay, well, the, Mr. Parsons has, upon due deliberation, withdrawn his motion entirely. Now, I know probably at some time in time, there'll be some required public opinion, public comment, but unless, Betsy, you know otherwise, we can not engage in that at this moment.
If there's, if there's no comments, that's fine. I, we have to show that, you know, we gave opportunity for public comment.
I think there was some miscommunication in what, what this was all about. It's not the city's responsibility to provide that for the water system. The water, it's the water system's responsibility to set up any public hearings and whatever that they need. I don't know if this was considered...
This isn't hearing.
Okay, this isn't a public hearing, so it's just...
Perfect.
They're just...
You're just being sent to...
Yes, and coming down here to, to the meeting instead of talking about it only at, at the county level, they're coming here to our meeting just to help make people aware and so they can answer questions and, and so...
So, it seems appropriate. Yeah, it seems appropriate that you could officially withdraw your motion. Wouldn't create any undue distress down the road. Okay, well, with that, then exercising my mayoral prerogatives, I would extend official appreciation on the part of the council to you, Betsy Dillon, for coming and sharing again what for us is significant opportunity if we were to successfully acquire the funding to build a second water tank. It would be a significant event in the history of the community of Vader, so, so thank you. Well, then, with that, I think that concludes, per the agenda, the special reports for tonight's council meeting. With that, we will then proceed with any comments we have from individuals in the public who might like to address the council.
We have two people signed up on the public comments. First is Judy Costello.
Wonderful. David invites you to take the podium.
Judy Costello, seven oh nine A Street. First off, thank you, Mike, for looking into the power at Murphy, at Murphy Park. I was one that asked that question. Number two, you looked into the fact that we boarded up houses in plywood. I would like to question, and I'm just going to, I'm just going to throw this out there and then I'm going to sit down. And if you want to discuss it, then you can discuss it, if not, in whatever. In January, February of twenty fifteen, two houses over on B Street got boarded up and they're still boarded up. And I was just curious where they fall underneath that whole adventure. So, that's, that's one question you guys could talk about or think about it.
I didn't catch, which addresses were you referring to? The two houses north of the old plans?
Two houses next door to that big building. And there was at one point, I believe in August, Mr. Flynn offered information that those folks had pulled a demo permit and that those properties were going to be demoed at that time, but, but we still haven't, so I'm just kind of throwing that out there. And the other thing is, I don't know if Mayor Ken realizes Judy Costello and Linda Wade are secretaries of the park board. But we've never been invited to any of the meetings since October, November of last year.
I can tell you...
I'm curious of why we're not getting information to come to the meetings, the last one on a Saturday. There was no minutes because we had them and we did not know the meeting was going on. So, I just wanted to throw that out. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for that inquiry. I can tell you that the, that the mayor was acting on information that he'd received, which he believed was reliable, but neither party was interested in continuing, continuing to participate in that particular activity. So, obviously, there's a breakdown in communication.
Certainly.
But the mayor will ensure that we reconnect.
Thank you.
Your participation would be most welcome. Great. Okay, then, next?
Next, we have Julie Hedlin.
Before, I don't think we adequately answered the observation you had about the two houses.
Well, I didn't know if you needed to check into it or not, I just kind of wanted to throw it out there and not take a lot of time.
I think we can respond to what's happening because we are on top of the application of the code enforcement ordinance. Would you like to respond?
Those have been boarded up before, those two buildings, those two houses are right next to each other, right next to the line, so were boarded up before we started the code enforcement action. They have done that on their own and were not part of code enforcement action at this point. Haven't been identified as one of the highest priorities yet, so that, that hasn't come into play with, with those two buildings yet. And yes, they did apply. The owner did come in and apply for a demolition permit on his own for both of them. However, the permit expired and he didn't do anything with them, so...
But that doesn't mean that once those two houses are actually applied in the high, the top priority list, that they won't be subject to the twelve-month time limit that is on them, so. But yeah, because of the astute investigation of what Mr. Parsons on the council, we're aware of that and so we're paying close attention to it. There are other houses that are boarded up and we're, we're aware of their twelve-month end date. So, this is good. But there's other information I can share outside this meeting, like I mentioned, when coming to the landlords responding to our letters. So, that I don't think most of you are aware of, so I have no qualms about bringing you up to speed. Okay, now, we'll proceed with our public comment. Go ahead.
Eleven oh seven, eleven oh eight streets, sorry, Julie Hedlin, renter. Thank you, Mr. Parsons, for providing the information that is necessary for the people of the town of Vader. Again, for Betsy Dillon, thank you. You have provided information to everyone in this town and that is very important. There are people who are fifty-five plus and they do not sometimes understand. Some of them have anxieties, some of them have what you call, you get in a, what you call a rut or a comfort space and zone, and that's where they want to stay. So, anything outside that zone, they start, little electrolytes going on. Thank you, appreciate that. Ms. Allison, again, thank you. Mr. Cheeseman, we really appreciate you. Thank you. Thank you, Ruth. And thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Joe, Mr. Wilson, and Leona Huntley. And again, Jill, thanks. That's all I have to say after that.
That's unusual.
Yes, it is.
It's gratifying to hear some supportive commentary from members of the community. Okay, well, then, with that, positive feedback, let's proceed with our official business on tonight's agenda. The first involves an update on the stormwater drainage on Seventh Street, five oh six near Ananen Road. Been on that for a long time and I don't think I need to remind members of the council that we're being held hostage by Mother Nature to make our much-desired progress on that particular issue. So, as of two days ago, I was informed, having been out of town for over a week and ever so, that Mother Nature has effectively derailed our efforts to do videotaping inside the suspect pipe. And so, does our city clerk have anything?
That's where we still stand.
We're subject to the assistance of the city windlock. We've, as you know, already approved the expenditure of the money is necessary to do that. He's employed full-time and is just waiting for a break in the window, the rain window. And hope that it, we had one last week, but he wasn't available. But we wait.
Do we, I drove by the other day and out of the west side of the railroad tracks...
Yeah.
Looks like a stream coming out of there.
That's, that's the issue we're trying to address.
So, it's coming right out of railroad tracks?
That's the issue we're trying to address.
Okay.
Well...
Because the pipe that we were looking at before, down by the creek, coming up from that...
Right, but I think the question is about whether that pipe is collapsed and causing an overflow higher up that's making it go down through the railroad tracks.
Well, which water, I mean, there's a lot of water flowing through that, right?
Yeah, there's on the, on the west side of the tracks, just about, just about even with Jason's drive-through window. There's, there's just a, a flow coming out of there.
That is the water in question. So, we're, we're, it will get videotaped.
There's a sewer main right at Main Street and right by the highway there by my place. And in this sewer main, anyway, several years ago, I mean, it's several years ago, we looked at it, wondering how come we're getting more water down at the sewer plant? Well, all the stormwater that was coming from the school through this line that goes all the way to the Oligro was dumped in the sewer manhole. And so, Tommy Spain and his son came down there and fixed it where the old clay tile comes down Seventh Street or Highway five oh six, and they fixed it into the manhole and it's still there today good. Then here, not too many years ago, Sheriff McDowell and I were standing there and here's Burlington Northern digging into that clay tile and throwing the clay tile like this, forgetting all about that that was a main storm drain. That's part of the problem right to date, period. I stood right there and watched it and I've been here for sixty-some years in this city. I know very well most where all the stormwater goes. It goes on both sides of the street, Highway five oh six, not just one side, goes on both sides. And that's the big problem yesterday, but then one of the employees went down by the Oligro where the, went out and the State Department of Transportation come down and stopped him from digging because he was digging against the bridge wall, against the law. And so, that was another thing that was done wrong. And so, today, here we are today, wondering what's wrong. Well, I still tell them, which was a good idea, go down to the Oligro, dig a little hole, find the clay tile, put a camera in there like the mayor suggested, and run that camera up as far as you can go, find where it's at, and you're going to find, in the meantime, all the way up to the post office driveway, they're going to find a two or three clay tile breaks because right in front of the post office on the corner, it's sinking every day, and there you are.
Okay, very good. We hope that we can confirm everything you've just said. Who knows what we're going to find? It'd be nice if we could tie into an old mastodon bone or something, sell it for a small fortune, but I'm not anticipating. All right, so that is the report on item one. Item two, council to discuss options for vehicle weight limit regulations. This also stands on the agenda, and I know, Mr. Parsons, you have some information to share.
Yep, so I talked to the gravel company that I use. Their truck alone is twenty-seven thousand pounds. And when, and they load it per DOT at fifty-five, less than, just under fifty-five thousand pounds for the tandem axle, and then it's, it's another fifty-five for a trailer. So, that's what a load of gravel weighs. And so, we're trying to, we just need to decide for residents, well, we talked with the engineer the other day, and he was saying that there could be a residential path, basically, so it's not for commercial. And we could set some type of number limit or something like that on it. So, it still has to be discussed to figure out what we want to do. But it is definitely, thirty thousand pounds is definitely an issue with it being so light.
Not enough.
Yeah.
Well, it sounds like we're edging closer to having sufficient information to engage in some official action, but not quite yet.
Yes.
Right then, yes.
I think one thing that we need to do, something's happened, but years ago, we used to have a lot of weight signs, and I don't see any weight signs in town anymore. And I just wondered what happened to them all.
We have a weight, we have weight signs on both sides of town coming in.
There's at least six or seven, but one-third of them are different. They're not all uniform.
Oh, really?
Some are so faded that you can't read them. So, it's definitely, definitely something we need to address. Do we have a member of the public who'd like to share a thought? Council refer to that? I see yes.
Mr. Parsons in city council, I have a Class A CDL, and the weight signs are based on how often the road is used, like D Street, that used to be, it goes out, up past, if you go, I believe it's, I'm saying north, goes to the dead end past, I believe, the Charlton residence and her dad. And out there, they use a lot of the, what I want to say is log trucks, things like that, or, you know, the big, the big, what I call the big dogs, okay? And that road, complete road, all the way down to where I live, which would be where Shay would live, is E Street going, you know, wets, those seats. East, and when you go east past the school right there, that whole road, all the way to the stop sign there, to go left towards Shy's and then Mr. Ivan across the street right there, is all legal for the weight limit from his sign through because that's what the school buses weigh also. Okay, a school bus and a bobtail truck semi almost weigh the same. You can take an RV and a semi with a truck and trailer and they are just about the same. The only difference is the fifth wheel point at which they are attached. That's what makes a semi and a bus or an RV different, but the weights are about the same. So, does that help you concerning weights? That's why the weights are different on each road.
Yeah.
Yes, that road was, we, you know, at one point legalized for that all the way through so that the buses could get through town to deliver the children.
Okay, that's identifying. Thank you for that insight. My sense is that we need to keep this on the agenda until we are able to bring it to its logical conclusion, unless there's some council conversation... it to its logical conclusion, unless there's some council conversation to the contrary. During none, I suggest we move to our next agenda item, which is that the council is to consider Resolution 10-2017, the small works roster contract, which needs annual approval. This is pretty much a pro forma process, so I know that it's going to require a great deal of discussion. But would await council action?
I'll make a motion. I move to approve Resolution 10-2017, authorizing the mayor to execute the small works consultant and vendor roster contract with MRSC rosters substantially in the form attached to this resolution.
Okay. You've heard the motion submitted by Mr. Shay to approve Resolution 10-2017 as read. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. Any additional commentary at this time regarding this motion? During none, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, wonderful. That motion is carried. So, thank you. We're legal for another 12 months. Now, the next and last item is the council to select the codification company. Hope you have had time to review the information that has been added to your packet. This is pursuant to the council approval to engage in this effort to bring this city into the 21st century. And it is one of the single most egregious shortcomings we have as a community, which is a constant source of perplexity to our attorney and our city's debt. And I could couch it in even stronger verbiage if I desired it, but I'm, but I know the council is sensitive to this issue. I know, Leona, you maybe have not gotten a full grasp of it, but we're operating in the dark ages when it comes to our indexing of our ordinances. And it's like you have to file through thousands of pages of documents to track down what our ordinances are. We're one of the few cities that is operating with outdated equipment. We waste a lot of precious time and energy, not only on our paid employees, but our legal attorneys. So, with that, I'm hoping that the council will be decisive on this matter and would, so there with that having been established, I'll turn the conversation over to the council.
I'd like to hear what, Jill? I'd like to hear what Jill has to say.
Okay. So, we have the two bids, MuniCode or Municipal Code Corporation and then Code Publishing. And they, of course, don't put their bids together the same way, so you have to fish through and ask a lot of questions. So, I did all of that research and what you see in your agenda bill is basically the culmination, which is they're within $50 of each other for codifying and legal review of approximately 300 pages, which is what they're anticipating. They both estimated to be about 300 pages worth of code once they get all of our ordinances together. They both offer, you know, either single column or double column, if that makes any difference to anybody as far as how the code will look once it's printed. The online publication, which is big now because that makes it accessible to the public basically anytime, anywhere. And so, whenever anybody from the public has a question, they can go to the code and look it up by topic and have it all there. That makes it really good for the city to have that available. That is the only place that I found a really significant difference between the two companies and that is because the, the cost per year is about $20 difference between the two companies. However, the one company, MuniCode, will give you the first year for free of their online publication service. And so, basically, their online publication service means that they will publish it and we will have a link that we could put on our website that where people could go to. They will, the company will keep it updated. Anytime we have a new ordinance or change anything, we just send it to them. There is a fee, you see down below, is nineteen, between $19 and $22, depending on which company we go with, per page cost for updates. But then they, they update it and keep the, the online service available and make sure that it's always there for the public to be able to come and use as well as ourselves. So, really, to me, it's six of one, half a dozen of another, except that MuniCode will give us a year for free, so...
How were they to deal with?
I dealt with salespeople, so they were all, they were both really nice. I don't have any experience as far as how their customer service is, you know, how, how well they're, how easy they're going to be to work with. They both have about the same timeframe estimate of how long it'll take, which is nine to 12 months to do all of this. I found out both of, from both of them, that they require that we have all of our ordinances that we want them to codify sent to them in Word document form, which some of ours, a lot of ours, especially the old ones, we don't have in Word document, so that means we'll have to type them and send them to them. That's why they give that lengthy timeframe. It's not because it takes them that long, but they anticipate with what cities usually have to do, because a lot of times they don't have things in Word document form and so we have to type them in and send them to them that they anticipate it takes between nine and 12 months to complete the process, so... But it all seemed really, everything they were telling me, I didn't get a feeling that one was better than the other, or... They both have a great list of what cities use them and they all seem to be happy with what they've got, so I don't think we can go wrong either way. I think, I mean, they're both very well-established, so it's just a matter of choosing one.
Okay.
And that's going to be you or Diane?
Yes.
Working on that? Are you going to have time to do that?
Unless we get some volunteers from the community who want to do some typing work, but, well, we'll make it happen. I mean, it'll just, if, if it takes us longer to get them the stuff, it'll take longer to do, to get it completed, but we'll just do what we have to do. You know, there are, there are applications out there that we can purchase that convert PDF files to Word publications. I know my husband has used that in the past and so that's an option. I don't, I suspect because...
Should you scan it?
Yeah, yeah, you scan it and then you put it in this application and it will convert all the, it'll recognize all the letters and then it will convert it to a Word file for you. And since my husband paid for it, I'm guessing it probably wasn't that expensive. He's like me, he's kind of cheap, so I'm not thinking it's too expensive, but I mean, that's another option. We could check into that and see, you know, for a hundred bucks or something, we get a...
I think we should definitely check into that because that's going to, I mean, they're talking about 300 pages and that's, 300 pages just to find and retype, just to find.
That's what it will be when they're finished and that, and the ordinances have a lot more verbiage in it than what's actually published in code. So, yeah, there's a lot of...
During that conversation, we had a member of the public who seems to have the thought.
Well, I was just going to go with the scanning and the, and then I was looking at Joe.
They're correct.
Yes.
They are correct.
You're going to type more?
No, what they're...
Yeah, the scan, the, rather than, yeah.
Optical character recognition.
There you go.
OCR software.
I didn't, I didn't know that part, so that's why I was looking at Joe. I knew there was a way to do it, but...
Okay. That's clarifying.
I went to both of these companies' websites and looked at the different cities that use their services and I can, one of these companies is based in Seattle and most of the Washington cities use the Seattle company. But there were, there were local cities at both companies, Castle Rock, Winlock, and Napavine, and Chehalis and Centralea with the, with the other one. And I looked at their finished product on both websites of what, what we would get and they're both, they're both really good. There's, they are the same. So, I don't see any reason why not, why not to use the one that gives us the $500 free year of web service, so...
I'll also mention that both of the, both of them offer additional online services like special searchability and, and different things that, that aren't, I didn't include in this because when we talked about it previously, council was, you know, saying, no, we don't need all that extra stuff, so I didn't include it and I didn't compare those between the two, so... But that's extra cost as well. We're talking hundreds to thousands per year for these extra things, so just to let you know there are other options available should things progress and all of a sudden in the city we need these extra options for something, that there are additional online options.
I noted that...
I went through the paperwork angle online and checking it out, but personally, I think if a company's willing to give a year free, they're pretty competent in their abilities to, you know, satisfy their customers. I felt pretty good about that.
We had a member of the public who'd like to make a comment, the council referred.
I have a question and I'm going to direct it to Joe because he worked at both web pages. The question, Joe, would be, who's the oldest publishing company, MuniCode or the other? And how many years have they been in business?
I can't tell you that. I didn't see, I didn't look at that. I just looked at, they both had hundreds of cities that they do business with and they both seemed comparable in customer base.
Okay. And is there a good customer service number? Is it an 800th number or is it just online?
They both have 1-800 numbers.
Perfect.
So, Muni, MuniCode's been over 65 years.
Thank you.
And the other one is for the past 27 years.
Okay. That gentleman would...
To follow up on that observation and inquiry, which one, Mr. Shay, was the one that would offer the 12 months?
That's MuniCode, that's the 65 years.
The one located out of Tallahassee, Florida?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. It's just a question.
Well, I know, I personally am not going to speak for our city clerk because she is the one who is most dramatically impacted by your ultimate decision, but I would be supportive of whatever the council decides.
I'll make a motion. I move to approve the bid by MuniCode and authorize the mayor to engage in a contract for codification services as specified in the bid document provided.
Okay, you've heard the motions submitted by Mr. Shay to approve the bid by MuniCode, the one that is giving it the 12-month free service. So, do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Senator Hunter. Any additional commentary? Now is the last opportunity to engage in any further discussion.
I'm excited to see it and have it there.
Oh, boy, you too.
It's going to be...
This is a goosebump-y moment. It so truly is. So, well, with that having been said, let's put it to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? And the motion is carried. We deserve a round of applause. Funding was allocated at the start of the year for the 2017 budget and now we'll make it happen. Okay, all right. Then with that, I believe that we've exhausted our agenda items, so I would officially declare this meeting closed at 7:05 PM.